Back to work. And we'll stand by attention, please.
Well, we're going to do this by law. We don't need to get it together. But by the way, you know, I still wish to rest of the Lord in your attention. We take our time and we just kind of go and do it again. Father, if you want to be sure of all that time and our plan and our pledge, you should put our hands on there, Lord, and you got to do something about it. Then you should understand we have.
Thank you. A couple of things to change on the agenda. We need to strike ordinance under old business, five A, and we need to strike under six B, new business, and we need to add E, new business opioid legislation.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've got to go to the center hall of the county.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Up next, have a public hearing. Call public hearing ordinance seven ninety-five. Ordinance adopt the annual budget, make appropriations for Marbury County for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Mullin.
Mr. Chairman, I will use this time to present the budget stuff instead of here in the final ordinance part and the other. Let me mute these guys. Just to let you know, too, we have Councilman Midgley and Councilwoman Plato joining us on Zoom, so they're in attendance as well. Our budget this year, we've done a lot of work. Last time we were with you, we, of course, had a lot of work to do. We had a large deficit we needed to fill, and we have sharpened our pencils as promised. We've also tortured you all with workshops and more detail than you want. So I'm going to give a brief overview of what the highlights of the budget are so that you can consider passing it later. This year in our general fund, which is the main amount of our money, you know, you have a copy of the budget on your table here, so it's at your table there. This is the largest part of our budget. It makes up about twelve million dollars. One thing we did was we went through it and we looked for every opportunity to cut or hold cost in sixty-six percent of every line that we have. We got tons of lines. We were able to hold it either equal or cut cost. We also were able to eliminate two open positions. One of them was an open position that we didn't fill, and the other one was one where we contracted out lawn mowing services instead of having an employee do it. So we've done things like that as well. We've had things, we had our workers' comp premium go down some significantly, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's not something that'll happen every year. Might go up next year, but it will take it in a year like this. We need every little bit we can get. We also, workers' comp that we charge for solid waste fund, which is separate from the general fund, or the fire service and all, we made sure we charged their bills in their departments. And it's not a big hit for anybody else, but it takes the burden off the general taxes. So that's important. Our EMS budget went down a hundred thousand dollars, which after a year of operations and getting a handle on what that's going to take, that's a good thing. Just make a note on that. We're now seeing that one point, I have the notes here somewhere. That our EMS budget right now, one point four million dollars comes from taxes and one point one comes from billing insurance companies. And interestingly enough, in our prior arrangement we had, we paid one point one million dollars to contract services, and the rest, I assume they were covered in billing. So we're about the same as what's going on there, and we will continue to monitor that and as things, we have more data, we can look at service levels and all that. With regards to revenue, we did see, we did plan for some decreases in revenue with things that come from the state, particularly things that are based on sales tax. We're a little concerned about that, but we didn't go crazy and cut it way back. I think that if everything goes bad, we'll need to come back together and figure that out. I don't, we are not presenting to you, and your feedback in workshops was not to present a doomsday budget. You know, instead of us, we have a reasonable budget, and if things go bad, then we'll have to figure those things out. We did see some small increases or a significant increase in revenue with regards to manufacturers' depreciation and local option sales tax. Those numbers are difficult to pin down, they're state money, and they seem to fluctuate, but in this year, again, it's a good thing to see that. Normally, we wouldn't take the whole, we wouldn't plan for the whole amount, but this year we did, and I think it'll work out that way. We did have some expense increases, as you might imagine. We had increases for, you know, different things you can see on the sheet we have, like health insurance and property liability insurance, retirement contributions, those sort of things that brought the expenses up. And then also, we had budget requests that you discussed in the workshop, and I have included, and those are a two percent cost of living increase and some money for a compensation adjustment study for when someone gets more training or someone takes on more responsibility or that sort of thing. That's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, this would start in December, and it would not start at all if the money's not coming in. So we're asking you to approve it, but it's also contingent on what happens with revenue. Also included is software for the tax assessor's office. That was software that allows them to digitize and go full computer on the property cards and how they value property. This is much needed to make things accurate, and we appreciate the tax assessor negotiating that, being able to split that over three years. That's eighty thousand dollars, and we would take an extra amount out of a reserve to cover that. That is an investment that will play out and be good for the county. We also had a request for sixty thousand dollars to do more leased vehicles. If you remember, we leased fifteen, sixteen, or seventeen vehicles for the sheriff's office and detention center, and it saved us a tremendous amount of maintenance, and we've got nice vehicles on the road and less breakdowns. We want to continue doing that with our Public Works, Public Buildings type vehicles. But instead of doing sixty, we've asked for thirty, and we put that amount in. That'll take care of the oldest and worst-conditioned vehicles so we don't make bad long-term decisions based on a short-term problem we have here. Also, the rural fire budget that's included has increased the amount that we pay volunteers to go to a call. Right now, they're paying twelve dollars per call, and they've asked to go to fifteen. This is in line with other counties around us and has been included in our workshops we discussed, you know, having the chief's committee, the fire committee, meet just to make sure they know and they're doing it like, you know, they think it should be done, but the money is in there. So the money is there. Other changes, one other notable change is our solid wa, we now have a solid waste fund, and it has money coming in from the amount we put on taxes for the roll cart. But that amount that comes in for the roll carts goes right back out to the roll cart company. There's no extra on those bills except for ten dollars, and that ten dollars is to cover the cost of things brought to the convenience centers. Mr. Caraba, who's here but distancing from us, will tell you that they've been overloaded. It's just more coming in than we can deal with, and the problem seems to be folks taking advantage by bringing trailer loads of shingles or construction debris, that sort of thing. So in this budget is a fee of fifty dollars a ton for not just your average person, but folks bringing in a whole load of shingles or lumber or something like that. They'll have to run across the scale. So it should not impact the average citizen bringing appliances, furniture, electronics, tires. Those things will be free, no problem. But if you take the roof off your house, you're going to have to pay, you know, whatever that costs. The bottom line of all of this is important, especially, my battery went dead, so that's not good. The bottom line and the most important thing is there's no tax increase. And in a year like this, that's remarkable that we've been able to work, council and the staff's been able to work to make that happen. So no tax increase on the part that the county controls. We don't control the other schools and that kind of thing. It will require the use of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of reserve funds. We used four twenty-three last year, so that's pretty close. We also, you know, as we said, we'll monitor the revenue, we'll advise council of actions needed, and we'll hold expenses. So if we see a problem coming down the track, then we will take action to come to you all and meet and figure that out. So, Mr. Chairman, I went fast, but we've been through it and been through it and been through it, and I wanted to get the highlights for the public and other folks. And I'll answer any questions. I know more about it than I really want to.
Question or comments from council? All right. With none, we'll go ahead to public here for ordinance seven ninety-six, approved capital improvement plan for Marbury County for period.
This is included in your packet, and it's basically just a loose guideline of vehicles and things we'll replace. It's not binding in any way. In fact, it probably needs to be rolled into the budget next year or either eliminated, but we did include it for this year. So we will, we have it, and we'll ask you to vote on it in a little bit, but again, it's not, it has no cost or anything assigned to it. It's just a guiding document, like a strategic plan.
Got you. Any comments? We'll close this public hearing and have approval minutes for May nineteenth, twenty twenty.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
All right. It is unanimous for the ones we have here. Old business, number B, ordinance seven ninety-five, ordinance to adopt the annual budget and make appropriations for Marbury County fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. I think that's what Mr. Mullin just went over. So I'd like for you to repeat the last part. There's no increase?
That's true. Of all the funds we have, it all comes out to be a net no tax increase at all.
No tax increase. All right. This is third reading. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Blackman motion, Mr. Odom, second. All right. So, all right. They're with us still here. All right. Ordinance seven ninety-six, ordinance approved capital improvement plan for Marbury County fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five. I guess the same thing as we just heard in public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've got to go to the second, uh, ordinance seven ninety-six, third reading.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. I think we were good. So trying to keep up with those on Zoom, too. All right. Under new business, resolution authorize the submission of application by Marbury County through the Southland Emergency Management Office for fiscal year twenty twenty, local emergency management formus grant and authorization to accept if awarded, grant if awarded. Mr. Mullin.
This is the annual grant we do that provides money to fund the Mercy, we'll have to come back, old business.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I checked.
This new business item is a grant that comes to help fund Steve Baker's operation in emergency management. It's an annual thing, but you do have to vote to accept it. It comes, it's just a roll, we roll it over and over. It's in the budget, the amount's in the budget, but it's not something that requires a match or anything. It helps us tremendously, though.
We have a motion for resolution oh six oh two oh one.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Yeah, I'm fixing to back up the glasses. I guess fogged up with this mask. So we're going up to ordinance seven ninety-seven, under old business, ordinance postpone the implementation revised values ordering from the equalization program. That's the reassessment, second reading. Mr. Mullin.
Every five years, the state requires us to reassess all properties in the county, you know, mainly to look for new houses or something that's burned down, that kind of thing. And every year, at least for the last fifteen, for the last three or four times, we were able to get a one-year extension. So this is to get a one-year extension. Now, once this is done, we'll start on the next cycle, and we'll have the software you approved in the budget to make that work better. So this is something we are supposed to have done in the past, and we haven't, and we've found that we need to do it. So we're asking you to officially postpone it for one year.
All right.
Motion for this, ordinance seven ninety-seven.
Have a motion, we have a second. We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you. Now we'll get back to, we'll be up under C, under new business, authorization to accept donation of vacant lot near Market Street, administration building parking lot from VBJ Holdings. Mr. Mullin.
We have, there's a small lot, you should have something there at your table. Did we give it to him? It's got a little yellow box. It's just a little tiny lot about the size of this room. It's between us, behind the council on age, and someone out of town owns it and approached us through the former county attorney and just wanted to give it to the county. And, you know, if it were big and we had to do much to maintain it, you may want to not do that, but it's very small and it kind of squares off our parking lot. So we recommend you accept it, and it'll just kind of become part of our parking lot.
All righty.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've got to go to the second donation for the man, vacant lot.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Odom, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you. D, broadband initiative, CARES grant proposal. Mr. Mullin.
You should have a copy in your packet somewhere of this grant that's been put together by myself and Lee Chambers with Sand Hill Telephone Co-op. As you know, there's a lot of talk on the state level about broadband. Of course, it's one of the county council's strategic initiatives, so we're always keeping an eye out for things that could help fund it, fund an improvement. Well, we're trying to get our hand or our name on the table for some of the CARES Act money that's coming as a result of coronavirus through the governor's office. So this grant would basically extend Sand Hill Telephone's lines down major corridors and the corridors in the county and therefore double the amount of folks with high-speed internet access. And you can see in the grant, you know, there's a line down thirty-eight, there's a line up thirty-eight, nine to Cloud, Tatum to McCallan on Scotland County, and Bennettsville or Society Hill. Scotland and the Society Hills are to provide backup connections, but it's a very detailed grant, you know, happy to share it with anybody with an interest in this, in the public, and it will be transmitted to the right people over the next couple of days. So there's no match or there's nothing like that, you know, that needs council approval. It's just, you know, putting our hand out and saying we need some help. We are the worst county in the state as documented for broadband access. It's not an opinion, it's in there, and only fifteen percent of our people have access to it. And it's played a big, it's created a big problem with telemedicine for screening for COVID-19 when that was ahead, you had to do it, and for children doing schoolwork and on and on and on and on. So we're excited, we kind of fell into it, and really like working with Sand Hill, who also came together kind of with an interest in this.
All running. Do we have a motion for support of that proposal? Or do we need a motion for that?
That'd be great.
Yeah. We have motion.
So.
All right. So we have a motion and a second for that. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Odom, having to get back to his other job. Yes, sir. Next is E for opioid legislation. Mr. Mullin, you want to speak on that?
Yeah, we have been, there's legislation across the country, much like the tobacco legislation, where folks are suing the pharmaceutical companies and others for contributing to the opioid crisis we have in the country. And counties and towns and cities across the nation are signing up with lawyers to be a part of this. And so we've been approached to do this, and we've had an executive session discuss how to go about it. And so what Attorney McLeod and I are asking council is to authorize Attorney McLeod to enter into the agreement on our behalf to be a part of that legislation along the same parameters as the counties around us, so it's pretty much a set deal. We don't know what will come of it, but as Mr. Blackman said, you're not going, nothing's going to come of it if you're not part of it.
All righty. So we have a motion.
Make such a motion.
All right. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you. Appointments to boards and commissions. Any appointments to boards and commissions?
No, sir.
All right. All right. Next, I guess, reports, Marbury County buildings.
We'll go through these pretty quick.
Okay.
We've had plenty of reports. You know, you all discussed and we presented to you the buildings that the county owns and what they're being used for in an effort to try to get rid of things that we aren't using and more fully utilize things we have. And one thing that came out of Hurricane Florence was the need for an emergency operations center. That's not nine-one-one, it's the room where everybody is, the fire, the rescue, the police are in the same room during the storm. And the one we have is under the front, under my office in the front hall, and it floods. Now, we've stopped it from being a flood, but it's always going to seep water into there just because of the way it is. Behind nine-one-one is a wing of this building that's occupied now by the Department of Juvenile Justice. And so what we proposed is to move them to where Recreation used to be on Hospital Hill, where the glass-in entrance to the hospital was before closed. We're doing renovations that are already underway there to paint and carpet and that sort of thing, move them there, and then use FEMA money that we have from the hurricane to renovate a nice EOC, high and dry, that we'll have ready. We're already hearing it's going to be an active hurricane season, we need to get on this and do that, but it does let us more fully utilize what we have without a whole lot more cost. So we would utilize FEMA money, I think that's like sixty-something, sixty, like, so it's like fifty, forty, fifty thousand dollars of FEMA money we can use, and then we had money for the other renovation already in the budget. So it's not a general fund expense, it's already set aside, it has nothing to do with the budget, you just approve. So we would seek your questions, input, and approval hopefully of moving forward with that. Okay?
Yes.
I don't know if you need to vote.
No, I don't think we need to.
Okay. Second item, we have, we have looked at trying to establish more of a recycling center. We're not taking household garbage at the convenience centers anymore, and we get lots of requests for people who want to recycle glass, paper cans, that kind of thing, and also need a place where people can come dump that's not like going on to the Wild West Safari, you know, where you can, now if you go, you've got to lift stuff up into a six-foot dumpster, and it's a real challenge. So the county owns the Borro property on Maple Street, so what we want to do is plant something off of Maple that has a, hopefully, a paved circle that you drive through, you know, the trash cans will be down, we'll elevate the road where you can throw down. If you have a trailer load, you'll fork off and go across the scale, and then we'll have a place where you can dump down there, too. You won't have to load up. And we're talking about something fenced in with shrubs, you know, a landscape. It will not be an odor problem for anybody in the neighborhood because we don't take trash, household trash. It won't be a noise problem because it'll only be during the day. So we're talking about a nice facility that people can use in a central location.
Would that be employee-operated, if you want to do it, working?
Yes, sir. We'd have, we'd have it staffed at all times. We'd have, we'd have it staffed at all times, we'd have a nice, you know, setup of building there for that.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've had some, I guess, not really complaints, but I guess it would be to get to the one this past weekend, and you know, and you, you do have to throw something over the back, you know, and, you know, and their thing was, it says, well, if we could have, until we do something, could we pull it out where they could go in the back and throw it in through the back door, you know, open the container, you know, they were backed up against it, so that may just be something. But I've had, I mean, I've had some calls to say, you know, they're just, it'd be nice if we could have a way to just throw down instead of have to throw over the top of something, so, so that might be just something we can look at.
Well, a good comparison is Rich McCounty, Rockingham, if you ride up there on Airport Road.
Yeah.
Route number one, they have theirs set up this way. And we put money in the budget, and we're able to set that aside with our auditor, so we have, this isn't a new expenditure. This is something that we do, we'll have to carry over into the new year, so we want to make sure it was out open as we're doing.
I agree, that makes a lot of sense. Y'all gonna laugh when I say this, if that, my height, that's a major problem. Yeah. Yeah.
Is it long for you?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's the difference between reaching and jumping. The other item on here is a hospital alternative initiative. Everyone's very interested in a hospital, and you know, as, as we've been working on that over the years, the county council's taken the lead, that's one of your strategic initiatives. We've done a lot of work with task force people to try to figure that out. And if you remember a few years back, Chairman Steen, I think, might have been chairman then, we were able to get a study done to say what we could support here, whether it's a hospital or, or something lesser than a hospital. And that's all old now, so it's time to get something like that again. So what, what we want to do is, is write a letter to the Marlboro General Hospital Charities Trust, asking them to fund and sort of be in charge of getting a study done, and that we can all, as a, as a community, look at, and it won't be opinions or politics or emotion, it'll be the facts. And I've talked with the chairman over there of, you know, Ms. Jane Rogers about it, and they're meeting in July, and that sounds like something they would be very interested in doing. So I want you to know that that is coming. You know, the whole goal of the strategic initiative the county has is, you know, what can we support? And if it's going to take some money somewhere locally or whatever, how much is that money? Not just a guest, but we may not have the money, but we have a target. And I can tell you, doing EMS budget, if you had a place that EMS could go to in the county, you know, it'd be much, much, much better. You have a bound copy of the financial report. I don't talk about finance anymore, it's all in here, including this current year's stuff. Everything looks to be on track. There's always things that come out at the end of the year from the state that sometimes can be a wild card, but we don't have any red flags of anything. Expenses have been controlled, and we, we think will come out within the budget. Very briefly, there's an administrative report, I'll keep mine in there, but you have a copy of, I may even have a copy here somewhere. We always do the employee service anniversaries, five years or more. This year, it's Deborah Weldon with 20 years, Johnny Fair with 15, Mr. Pat Odom with 14, Tanya Harmon with 15. You'll see some information on here about Association of Counties' summer convention, and of course, it's been changed due to COVID-19. What they're going to do is shorter, and a lot of stuff will happen online. Economic development-wise, we did do a tour of the Delta site with council members and partnership, and the partnership board, and we had a fair showing. Cleanup work has begun in earnest on that site, and we're excited about it, and we'll hopefully at some point here in the next, when it cools off, be able to take the public and let them see what's going on. I know particularly in the Wallace community, there's a lot of interest in that, and it's really starting to, starting to happen there. We've also had some real interest in the site already, you know, it had died down during the coronavirus. We've had a company very interested in it, interested in it, and we're meeting with them, they've come to the site. It was nice to see a little bit of economic activity going on, even with everything happening in the world. And finally, the administrative report, we continue to, to take precautions due to the coronavirus, and we have the same plastic shields up and all that. We're maintaining six-foot distance, if we can't, we wear masks. At this time, with the, with the recent spike of cases you're seeing everywhere, and particularly here, I don't recommend any changes in that. The only change that we may have is that, you know, some of the open areas, like courthouse grounds or the grounds of the Merkston or somewhere like that, you know, that's, that's different than having an organized ball or anything like that, that's not that big of a deal, and those things could be, you know, people can go on those things without a big deal there. The library is continuing to do curbside pickup where you can call in, the information's there, and request something, they'll prepare it, and they'll have it for you when you drive through. So we appreciate them trying to do their best to provide something during this time period. It's a tough time, and we've all kind of gotten lackadaisical about it, and we have to occasionally stop and go, we still need to be careful, because we still have, we actually have more cases than we did. So that's, all kinds, that's me, I'm on my report.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Mullen? All right, Ms. Plato, did you have anything?
Ms. Plato, did you have anything you want to say? Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on, let me try to get you where I can hear you, Ms. Plato.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, we can barely hear you right now, but go ahead.
Okay. Now, I don't have anything to say at this time. Like, everything's going good for the budget, and all that looks good and everything, so I don't have anything right now.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Measley?
Measley.
I just had to commend staff on their work with the budget, and thank you, that's all I've got to say.
And just, just so everyone knows, with us watching and the council members, we do have Mr. Ken Strowman, who's not official yet, but, you know, unless he gets struck by lightning, it'll be the, the new council person for district files, so.
All right. All right, thank you.
And it sounds like it's getting ready to lighten out there, so you better hide, Mr. Ken.
All righty. All right, Mr. Gladon. You good?
I just want to thank the staff and all the council members and everybody involved in this, keeping the taxes down for the people. I mean, I really appreciate that, and I know the citizens do, and I just, you know, show some appreciation on what you've done, and it means a lot to me, and I know everybody's worked hard to do it, and with everything going on right now, I know everybody needs all the break they can get, you know, but I, I thank everybody.
I'm very, um, you know, anything to do with the flood and the paper, um, county money to get the fans and put us, block people to pay, I don't know, um, so, I'll have all to, um, hold that back. So, uh...
All right. Piggyback, same thing, you know, commend them for, you know, sharpening their pencil. It's always good whenever you can go from one budget year to the next without having a tax increase, especially in these kind of conditions, everybody said, but we thank for that. Like I said, up in the Wallace area at the post office, there's a little green library box up there, so the library's putting books in and people's using it, so they're actually putting books in and taking books out. So, you know, if you're in there and can't get to the library, I think they check it periodically, so that's one of the little things up in the Wallace that they're doing. And so good to hear that there's some positive going on at the Delta site. Hopefully, that'll be a, an active site in the very near future, you know, and so I remember, in its heyday, I think there was two or 3,000 people that weren't there, so, you know, hopefully we can, it'd be nice to be able to bring that, something like that back to our county, you know, much, you know, so, and so we're glad of that. All right, nothing else, call to meeting adjourned.
Y'all later.